And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Samora.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for reuniting us again today to serve your will here in our city, in our county, our state, and our country, and on your world. Please give us the wisdom and discernment to make those decisions that are necessary to improve our community and to protect and preserve the public good. In these trying times, we ask for patience and peace, to unharden our hearts, to open to love, to speak of community, and putting others first. Remind us to be the kind of people that you want us to be, to be the best in serving our community and serving those who have the least. We ask you for all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. We have a couple of proclamations. First, breast cancer Awareness Month. Commissioner Samora.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have some representatives?
No. Cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States excluding skin cancer, with rising incident rates, especially among women under 50, per the American Cancer Society, and whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in their lifetime, and one in 43 will die unfortunately from the disease, per the CDC. And whereas in 2025, an estimated 316,950 women and 2,800 men will be diagnosed, and over 42,000 women and 500 men will lose their lives to breast cancer. And whereas early detection through mammograms significantly improves survival rates, with over 90% five-year survival for early-stage detection. And whereas mammograms are widely considered the gold standard for breast cancer screening because they are an effective tool for detecting early-stage breast cancers, often before they can be felt. Mammography can detect abnormalities in the breast tissue up to two years before they are detectable by touch, leading to earlier diagnosis and more effective treatment. And whereas South Texas Health System has earned national recognition for its breast care services, including 2D and 3D mammograms, and was awarded the 2025 Women's Choice Award for America's Best Hospitals for Comprehensive Breast Care. And whereas South Texas Health System hosts annual events in October, like the Think Pink Parade, to raise awareness, promote early detection, and empower women to prioritize their breast health. Now therefore, I, Joaquin Javier Samora, City Commissioner for the City of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the power and authority vested in me and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Emma Montez Ewing, and I serve as the CEO of South Texas Health System, McAllen. And on behalf of South Texas Health System, I want to tell you, we are honored to be trusted with the care and the care of the families in our community. And as a woman, as a previous healthcare provider, and as a leader, I want to emphasize the importance of awareness and the power behind education. Because early detection makes a lot of difference. We see that every day. But I also recognize it can be scary. And we, whether you're a woman or a man, we all have that fear of what if? What is that result going to show? But I want to tell you, the earlier we are able to detect it, the better results we have achieved. So I cannot emphasize, get your mammogram. We have state-of-the-art equipment. We have very caring, compassionate individuals that are very skilled at what they do. That can make the whole process a lot easier. And I know I have here my Director of Radiology and Diagnostic Imaging, and maybe you can tell him a little bit about the technology we have?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Charlie Aguirre, Radiology Director for South Texas Health System, McAllen. And I just echo what Ms. Emma Finister saying regarding screening and prevention. You know, that's going to be the early detection that's going to increase survival rate in the event that we do find some negative or positive findings. So our 3D technology is just that. It's basically a 3D view of breast tissue that can think of a slice of, a loaf of bread, if you will, all those different integral slices. That'll be that breast tissue that we're scanning to be able to determine if truly there is a tumor that may be cancerous, and then on to the next phase. But as Ms. Emma said, I will echo that our staff will receive you, welcome you, guide you through the process, explain everything that's about to be done prior to, that will ease any anxiety, answer any questions, because we truly care and are committed for patient care. So, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. And next, we have Native Plant Month. Commissioner cabeza de vaca.
How are you doing? Good afternoon. Very, very excited to be over here and to read this proclamation. You know, as you guys know, the plants are a vital thing in our, in our community. And definitely native plants are very important. There's a lot of native plants are in the verge of probably being extinct, and we have to take care of them. But there's, there's different things about native plants, especially the ones out of Texas, where it helps us with, with water. These plants need less water than the other ones. And with water scares that we have right now, in not only in the community, but also in the world, we have to be careful. And this, this kind of things help a lot into it. So the City of McAllen is being proactive, you know, about all these kind of things. Proclamation, State of Texas, County of Vidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas along with the State of Texas, the City of McAllen proudly celebrates Native Plant Month in October, honoring the importance of native plants to our nature and cultural heritage, and recognizing that they are vital for the very air we breathe. And whereas the Tambolepan Thorn Forest and other native habitats of the Rio Grande Valley create unique landscapes that support plant and animal species found nowhere else in the United States. And whereas the City of McAllen demonstrates its commitment to native plant landscaping by planting more than 2,000 native plants this month through initiatives such as the Tiny Forest, Skull Butterfly Gardens, and Community Plant Giveaways. And whereas more than 20,000 additional native plants will be added this fall as part of the Center for Urban Ecology Expansion Project at Quinta Masatlan. And whereas Quinta Masatlan is offering more than 30 educational programs for community engagement, including a fun social evening called the VIP Night, Very Important Plants, on Thursday, October 16. And whereas McAllen trees contribute over $5 million annually in ecosystem services by filtering air pollutants, storing carbon, and reducing stormwater runoff. And whereas native plants support the city economy by strengthening the business of ecotourism by attracting visitors from around the world to experience McAllen's natural beauty. And whereas native plants save water, support wildlife, and beautify our cities, encouraging everyone to plant them from present and future generations. Now thereof, I, Pepe cabeza de vaca, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Native Plants Month. Congratulations, guys.
We're here to invite you to our tiny forest that is upcoming, the 25th of this month, October. It's a Saturday, correct? Okay. That will be at the Fireman's Park. It's our seventh.
Yes. We'll be planting a lot of native plants along the Second Street Hiking Bike Trail pretty soon. Denny?
Bring a shovel.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have Arbor Day Celebration. Commissioner Rios.
Good afternoon, everyone. There's a quote that says, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second-best time is now." This quote reminds us that it is never too late to make a positive impact. Therefore, it gives me great pleasure to present this Arbor Day proclamation. Let us begin. State of Texas, County of Vidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska in 1872, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil from wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and our renewable resources giving us paper and other wood products. And whereas, in our city, trees increase the property values, enhances the economic vitality of business areas, and beautifies our community. And whereas, keeping McAllen Beautiful Arbor Day Celebration was created to help and establish a dedicated tree fund for our city to help ensure a prosperous future to our community through proper tree maintenance and tree planting with the help of our citizens, as well as promote physical well-being through a 5K, a 10K, a kids' fund run, and a 25-mile and 100K bike ride. And now therefore, I, Rolando Rowley Rios, City Commissioner of the great city of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, on behalf of the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim November 8, 2025, as Arbor Day Celebration Day.
Congratulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudia. I want to thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Management for giving us the opportunity to invite the public to our Arbor Day Celebration on Saturday, November 8, at Westside Park. This fundraiser will help increase awareness of the importance of planting and caring for trees. The day will begin with a 25-mile and 100K bike ride, a 5K and 10K run, and a free kids' fund run. All registered event finishers will receive a medal. The Arbor Day Celebration will feature music, educational booths, an ongoing tree workshop, and 1,000 free native trees and plants will be given to the public. We invite everyone to join us and be part of this celebration. Sponsorship and volunteer opportunities are still available. And if you would like to register, you could register on our website at keepmcallanbeautiful.org. Thank you.
And next, we have Fire Prevention Week. Commissioner Aguirre.
Good afternoon, everyone. We've had, we've got, we had a lot of residents, a lot of, a lot of employees, staff here. I want you to know that that's what it takes. That's what this community needs. It needs a good involvement of our residents, along with those that secure and beautify our city, to make a city a community. We recently, we recently went through pay and union negotiations, and we successfully came to a good understanding that one will protect our city, guarantees the safety of those that are performing the needs to keep our community safe and secure. And I am extremely proud of our, of our fire department here, and those that went and have taken the time to tool, to be the, to be the leaders, because many of them were here at the negotiations to make it happen. So on behalf of the community, we thank you so much, and we await the next three years of keeping it going, and we, we help you. Today, we have a proclamation. It's the State of Texas, County of Vidalgo, and the City of McAllen. Whereas the great city of McAllen is committed to ensuring that safety and security to all its living in and visiting our city. And whereas home fires killed about 3,000 people in the United States in 2024, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to approximately 358,500 home fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries are increasingly used in powering everything from smartphones, laptops, e-bikes, scooters, power tools, and even home backup systems. And whereas while lithium-ion batteries are generally safe, they can catch fire or explode if damaged, overcharged, improperly stored, or used with incompatible devices. And whereas while lithium-ion batteries are generally safe, oops, I just said that. Whereas the theme of this year's Fire Protection Week is Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home, aims to increase awareness from the risk of battery-related fires and empower residents to take simple but crucial steps to protect themselves and their families. And now therefore, I, Antonio Tony Aguirre Jr., City Commissioner for this great city of McAllen, by the power and virtue and authority vested in me, on behalf of the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October the 5th through the 11th as Fire Protection Week.
Commissioner Aguirre, thank you very much. Hello, everybody. My name is Juan Gloria, City of McAllen Fire Chief, and I want to thank you for this proclamation. And here before you, you have representation of all of our men and women of the City of McAllen Fire Marshal's Office. Muchisimas gracias. Mi nombre es Juan Gloria, y aquí frente nosotros tenemos representación de las mujeres y los hombres representantes de nuestra división de prevención aquí en el departamento de bomberos. And today, we're here to make an effort towards fire prevention, and we're putting that emphasis, as the proclamation said, on safety with batteries at home. That is a theme for this year. Este año estamos enfatizando las precauciones debidas para la prevención de incendios con baterías de litio, que es algo muy predominante hoy en día en nuestros hogares. And I don't want to close without saying thank you to our fire marshal, to Sparky, to firefighter Sin Fuegos, that's his name, firefighter Sin Fuegos. On gray over there, we have Cadet, Cadet Joshi, and the rest of the, the rest of our team. This year, it is not new for the fire service, but this is the first time in which our community res reduction team has decided to step it up, be out there with the community with characterization, and, and trying to engage our kids and our parents, learn through our kids. And so this is something new to us, like I said, not new to the fire service, but we want to thank our city leaders for supporting us and for always being there for us in anything and everything that we want to do for the betterment of our city. So thank you very much to our CRR team, to our fire marshal, to our firefighters, to our inspectors, to everybody in the Fire Marshal's Office. Thank you very much. Be safe out there.
Commissioner, Mayor, good afternoon. So these are items for routine. Item number one is rezoning from C4 to R1. It's just, it's located at 4721 Buddy Owens, North Benson, I'm sorry. It's on the corner of Buddy Owens and Benson. Item number two is the rezoning from C3 to C2 to the new code, and this is on the corner of North Ware Road and Nolana. It's for a gas station. Item number three is for an Oak, Texas bar. It's for a conditional use permit, and this is on South 10th. Item number four is a city-initiated rezoning. This is items, 33 items.
I would like for you to count every single one.
We did.
Please.
And recite it.
Yeah, I want, Mayor Commissioners, if I could take just a second to thank Omar and the City Secretary's Office for reorganizing how the agenda will appear. As we work through implementation of the UDC and the citywide rezonings, you will now see one item on the agenda where those come with all of those matters listed under it, rather than seeing them separately, so that they stand out, and you know what they are. So thank you guys for taking the time to reorganize those.
Okay. Do we have anybody, anyone to speak against any of these items? Anyone to speak against any of these items, not to hire a motion to approve? So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. I need a motion to amend zoning ordinance of City of McAllen. So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. We have consent agenda items A through, through I.
Mayor, I just want to point out on the consent agenda, you have three items. They are all either an MOU or interlocal agreement related to anti-gang, anti-auto theft, or related items for the police department. Those are important annual grants that are adopted by the city. And also, item I, two, I want to point out is a resolution to accept federal aviation administration grants 62, 63, 64, and 66. Those are important grants that will fund 90% of the terminal improvement design and apron design related to the airport expansion that you're, you've tasked us with working on, Mayor. And then item two G, you'll see a budget amendment there, and that is a budget amendment to cover the acquisition of the property north of the convention center that the legal department was able to negotiate. We're set to close on that later this week. If there aren't any questions.
Just one final question on T, on item 2C, on the Tag Center. How, how long is the memorandum for the understanding, the MOU?
I believe they're annual agreements. Commissioner, let me double check.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says three years. I found it.
Three years. There you go.
Okay.
Motion to approve said items. I hear a second.
Second.
I've never had anybody deny or want to deny any grants. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Item three.
Mayor, item three A is a word of contract for the McAllen lateral channel. That is a $5.6 million item. The scope of work is, well, Ed, well, you're not Eduardo.
No, he's not.
Eduardo is out today, but Mario, tell us about this one.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Commission. The project, like Ike Stormy Thunder, the scope we're concentrating on is the McAllen lateral drainage improvements. It's one of our primary drainage conveying systems out in the northeast part of town. The uniqueness about this project is actually twofold. The primary focus is drainage, so we're expanding the capacity of the channel system between two of our existing regional detention facilities. The second also introduces the hiking bike trail component that introduces a segment between 10th Street and 2nd Street. Also, very exciting, introduces our first two, I guess, city-initiated below-grade crossings, one at 10th Street and one at North 2nd Street. We'll be able to access the trail uninterrupted at those two intersections. We had a good showing on the bids that were received. We received eight bids. Our apparent low bidder, our low bidder is Econ Group at $5,689,125 with 11 cents. So we're seeking approval to move forward with the construction.
I had a quick question here, Mr. Cruz. With regards to the profile, it'll go from a V profile to like a U profile?
Yes. Essentially, some of the section that you're familiar with out there has the trappers order section. This one kind of expands it to what you see in the rest of the city that we've been able to expand, which is the expanded trappers order with the maintenance benches, where we do get the benefit of the capacity as well as the facilitate the.
The access. Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Item B.
Mayor, and I just wanted to point out, items A, B, and C, I intentionally left off of the consent agenda, so that we could highlight the culture recreation and fitness elements of each of these projects. Item 3B is consideration approval of purchase installation of outdoor fitness court. Denny?
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, thank you. This item before you is a partnership with the National Fitness Campaign to bring in a fitness court to the City of McAllen. It is a seven-station court, which is about a 40 by 40 area, where there's different, seven different stations to where the community residents can come out into the park to provide, or to perform exercises on their own. And so it's one of a kind. We haven't had one like this in the city. And so we're very excited about this opportunity to partner with the National Fitness Campaign, with the grant department. It is a grant. And so we're very excited. We're going to hopefully put this, if approved today, put this station there at Bill Shute Park. So that'll be the first of its kind here in the city, so.
We're excited about that. I'll be there.
Yes, sir.
I'll watch.
I'll watch.
Okay. Any questions?
Y'all used to have something like that a while back, but they're probably too old by now, that you had stations that you could work out there?
Yes. From my knowledge, yeah, I don't, I don't remember one being comprehensive like this. I know we've got fitness stations along the trails in our parks, but this is all one inclusive unit to where they don't have to go far.
Commissioner, I know you're not taking advantage of the youth and inexperience of the director, are you?
Excellent.
Any other questions, or?
I saw move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Item C.
Mayor Commissioners, this item before you is a partnership with Irrigation County, District One, to expand the Benson Hiking Bike Trail. I know we've been on this one for a while now, and so we finally got the ILA approved through the Irrigation District. And so we're hoping, after today's approval, to go ahead and start construction on about a mile and a quarter trail that will expand the Benson Hiking Bike Trail north and south to add more leverage. In the future, we're going for a Texas Park and Wildlife Grant to hopefully expand that Benson Hiking Bike Trail down to the McAllen Nature Center, so that we can have connections down into Westside Park and the convention center.
So the expansion, the southern limit would be Nolana, right?
Right now, we'll go phase one. We'll start from Nolana to Three Mile, going through Garcia Park. Second phase will go from Vine, south, to Pecan.
Got it. Motion to approve.
Commissioner Samora, are you excited about it, or are you just going to watch?
I'm just going to go watch.
I like that, because it's in District Three.
Yes, sir.
Is that a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Item D. Against, motion carries, item D.
Right away for Mario to get to the podium. Mario has an anniversary today, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty years. Twenty years with the City of McAllen.
Congratulations, Mario.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to another twenty.
Esso, eso.
Mayor?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, the Transit Department is seeking authorization to negotiate scope and services and related fees with the top-ranked firm for transit-oriented development and bus rapid transit study. The purchasing department received four responses for the S O Q, an evaluation committee comprised of engineering and transit staff reviewed the statements and ranked the firms against the evaluation criteria presented in the solicitation, and staff recommends authorization to negotiate with Econ out of Chicago, Illinois.
Questions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item four.
Mayor, item four is consideration of a resolution to submit the P F C application to F A A for various McAllen International Airport Improvement Projects. The totality of the value of those improvements, Mayor, are approximately thirty-one million dollars. This is a resolution to improve, or to approve, the city paying the ten percent local match on that, so that's a five-point, roughly five million dollar investment on behalf of the city. But that does include terminal improvements, apron design, the, the terminal expansion design, airport fire station building design, our vehicle replacements, and various other important elements to the airport, so this is a tremendous opportunity.
Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Jeremy?
Mayor Commissioner, just, just, most of these projects are already approved in the twenty-sixth budget.
Second. Yeah, we, we, for everyone to know, we, we took a lot of time in workshops and budget, budget shops to get us to this point, and our investment is, is a very good.
I know it's been said, but I want to recapitulate, you can't beat nine-to-one leverage.
No, sir.
That is unbelievable. Thank you for all you do, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item five.
Thank you.
Mayor, item five is consideration of a variance to not require right-of-way dedication for Derrio subdivision.
This property is located at thirty-twenty-one South J Street, this particular area of J Street has twenty lots that were sold by Meats and Bounds, so they're not subdivided, so there's three of these particular lots that we did get right-of-way, however, it's just impossible to get right-of-way from all the rest of them, just because the homes are built almost right up to the right-of-way. So if we were to get additional right-of-way, we'd just put all of those out of place, so that's why we're recommending approval of this variance request.
Just to put them in Vine and.
Just, yeah.
Keep everything in the current alignment.
Who it is.
A second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, managers report, future agenda items. Anything?
Nothing.
We didn't get to the workshop item on the downtown art piece, but we'll bring that back next, next workshop.
Okay. Then we have a table item, resolution nominating Cannon for the Allo Cannon Preso District Board, do we need to act on that, or leave it there?
Mayor, for item seven, we can discuss that in executive session, if the board would like to do so, we do need to act today, and items eight, the items under number eight, we may also.
Excellent, we'll reach us into executive session, excellent.
Good, we're back from executive session. Counselor, what do we have?
Mayor, with regards to item 7A, I would recommend that the board entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
Okay, do you hear a motion?
No move to remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, off the table, okay?
Mayor, item 7A is a resolution nominating a candidate for the Idago County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Right now, Richard Garza is serving in this capacity. This is his seat, and he's been serving McAllen well. He goes to all of the meetings, or most of the meetings, I should say, if not all. And our recommendation is that we nominate a renewal for Mr. Garza.
I'm very well respected in the community. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Mayor, with regards to item 8A, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to proceed as described in executive session.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, item 8B requires a specific oral motion pursuant to local government code 2206.053. I'll read the motion.
Yes, sir.
The motion is that the city of McAllen authorize and ratify the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the following properties: 0.245 acres, 10,682 square feet of land located in the Gorgoydo Comacho Survey, section number 68, abstract number 28, city of McAllen, Idago County, Texas. Being a portion of Lot 4, Block 3, AJ McCall subdivision, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in volume 21, page 598, deed records of Idago County, Texas, D H C T. Being that same called 14.11 acre tract of land is conveyed to McAllen SSK Investment LLC as described in document number 1729033 of the Official Public Records of Idago County, Texas, for the improvement of the city's transportation infrastructure and enhancement of public safety, road widening, utility connections, and another public purpose. This will require a record vote.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
No move.
Second.
All in favor? Record vote. Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Mayor, with regards to item 8C, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to proceed as described in executive session.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's all we have? They're being up for the business, this meeting is adjourned.
Regular city commission meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network.